We call the meeting to order at 10 o'clock. Roll call.
Laura Wigan, present.
Pete Dowdham, here.
Jim Holloway, present.
Dolores Blackburn, here. We have established a quorum. At this moment, I'd like everybody to rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could I please have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from January 9th, 2024?
Yes.
Have I a motion to approve them?
Make a motion, we approve those minutes, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
We don't have any business from our last meeting, so moving forward to new business, we have three applications on the agenda today. We will take them one at a time. The first one has to do with an application from Paul Chandler, appealing the decision from the zoning administrator dated May 31st, 2024, which cited that 204 Bay Avenue was in violation of Cape Charles zoning ordinances, Section 2.4.2A, 1, Section 2.4.31, Section 8.16, and Section 8.17. The agenda, or the order of presentation for each application will be the same. The zoning office or the staff will present an overview of the application. Then we will allow the applicant to have to speak, and they will be limited to 15 minutes. Following that, we'll open it up to the public for questions regarding that particular application. And finally, the zoning board members will then have an opportunity to review the information and take action if necessary. So, starting with that, Mr. Chandler.
Staff presentation.
Oh, sorry, I have to go through all that. The staff presentation.
Good morning. Thank you for everyone coming out today. This is an application appealing of zoning administrator's determination and notice of violation issued on May 31st, 2024. And the owner of the property on 204 Bay Avenue is Mr. Paul Chandler. I'd just like to say, due to the fact that there was a slight error made in the email notification to the appellant, this matter was not held on August 13th, 2024 meeting. In addition, there was no quorum for that meeting, just in case any of the public had questions. Okay, the appellant is appealing the May 31st, 2024 zoning administrator notice of violation letter, which is part of Exhibit A, which we received in the packets and was posted online, which cited the appellant for the unauthorized removal and replacement of the roof and installing flashing to a chimney without obtaining permits prior to any work commencing. Said notice of violation letter contained the following corrective order and penalties: No work, number one, no work may proceed at 204 Bay Avenue without a certificate of appropriateness, and any permits may be required by the zoning administrator and code official. Two, a certificate of appropriateness application for roof and supporting documents. This was complete and submitted by the applicant on May 31st, 2024 without the required fee for the application, which is $500. Number three, based on the zoning ordinance for violations, the town pursuant to Cape Charles zoning ordinance, Section 2.4.3, will be pursuing all remedies available under law, including filing with the District Court of North Hampton County, a notice of violation for each of the listed zoning ordinance violations, which may result in you being found guilty of a Class IV misdemeanor and the imposition of fine of $250 per each zoning violation. And number four, payment for working without an approved and active certificate of appropriateness or after-the-fact permit fee of $1,000. And number five, by June 14th, 2024, submit to the planning and zoning office, a COA, which is a certificate of appropriateness, roof and payment $500, along with payment for the penalty fee of $1,000. The appellant does not believe he is in violation of Section 2.4.2A, since the building official ruled that a permit required was not, the building permit was not required for the scope of work undertaken at 204 Bay Avenue. The appellant does not believe that he is in violation of Section 2.4.3, since the work undertaken on the roof was maintenance and is exempt from this code section. The appellant does not believe that he is in violation of Section 8.16, because the work does not qualify as substantial alterations required by the historic district review board. Therefore, he does not believe that any permit or approval was needed from the town for the scope of work for 204 Bay Avenue, which was re-roofing. The original roof material was slate and copper, and proposed roofing material was slate, copper, and a baked-on enamel aluminum, and adding new gutters and downspouts. And then, listed for you on page two are the Code of Virginia requirements to be considered. Section 15.2-2309, powers and duties of the Board of Zoning Appeals. To hear and decide appeals from any order requirement decision or determination made by the administrator officer in the administration or enforcement of this article, or of any ordinance adopted pursuant thereto. The decision on such appeals shall be based on the board's judgment of whether the administrative officer was correct. The determination of the administrative officer shall be presumed to be correct. At a hearing on an appeal, the administrative officer shall explain the basis for his determination, after which the appellant has the burden of proof to rebut such presumption of correctness by preponderance of the evidence. The board shall consider any applicable ordinances, laws, and regulations in making this decision. For purposes of this section, determination means any order requirement decision or determination by an administrative officer. An appeal of determination to the board shall be in compliance with this section, notwithstanding any other provision of law, general or specific. And then we move along to another Code of Virginia section, Section 15.2-2311, appeals to board. An appeal to the board may be taken by any person aggrieved or by any officer, department, board, or bureau of the locality affected by any decision of the zoning administrator or from any order requirement. Decision or determination made by any other administrative officer in the administrative or enforcement of this article, any ordinance adopted pursuant to this article, or any modification of zoning requirements pursuant to Section 15.2-2286. Then we move along to the Cape Charles zoning ordinance requirements to be considered. We have Section 4.22A permits, which tells you about the requirement of getting zoning approval or building permits before doing any work within our, within the town limits of Cape Charles. So, one, no building or structure shall be erected, constructed, altered, moved, converted, extended, enclosed, or enlarged without the owner first having applied for and obtained a zoning clearance for a building permit from the town zoning administrator. Such zoning clearance shall be obtained prior to the application for a building permit from the Cape Charles Building Department. Nothing herein is intended to prevent normal maintenance, which does not require a building permit. Then number two, which was cited also, is the zoning administrator shall certify whether the proposed use, structure, alteration, or enlargement is or is not in conflict with the provisions of the chapter. If such proposal conflicts with the provision of this ordinance, the zoning administrator shall refuse to issue such zoning clearance for a building permit. And it goes on to tell you that you would have to pay the building permit fee, which is governed by the locality, and then the pursuant to the authority contained in 15.2-2286, the Code of Virginia. And then we listed the other violation codes, Section 2.4.3, violation and penalties. It shall constitute a violation of this ordinance for any person, either owner, agent, or occupant, to commence any actions for which a permit is required by this ordinance without having first obtained an approved permit. Any such permit issued upon a false statement of any fact which is material to the issuance thereof shall be void, whenever the fact of such false statement shall be established. The zoning administrator shall forthwith revoke the same permit by notice in writing to be delivered to the holder of the void property if such holder cannot be found by posting such notice of refaciation in some conspicuous place upon the premises where the violation has occurred. Any such person who shall proceed thereafter with such work or use without having obtained the proper approved permit in accordance with this ordinance shall be deemed guilty of a violation of this ordinance. And then we go on, it goes on to explain two and three. If you'd like me to read those, I can. And then, on page four, we're continuing to, number C, Section 8.6, approval of the historic district review board required, except as herein otherwise provided. In this article, no building or structure, including signs, shall be erected, reconstructed, restored, or substantially altered in exterior appearances, and no contributing buildings or structures shall be razed or demolished within a historic district, and no permit authorizing same shall be granted unless and until the same is approved by the historic district review board and a certificate of appropriateness has been issued by that body, with right of direct appeal to the town council as herein after, provided as being architecturally compatible with the historic cultural and/or architectural aspects of the structure and its surroundings. So then we listed what is for B, and is the contributing accessory structures will be treated as contributing structures only under the following conditions, and this is, we just listed everything for the historic district review board, sorry. If you go down to C, substantial alterations is defined, and that shall be defined as any and all work done on a building, structure, or site in a historic district other than those specifically exempt, and some things are exempt, which the general examples of non-substantial alterations, or work done to prevent deterioration or to replace parts of a structure with similar materials in order to correct any deterioration, decay of, or damage to any structure or any part thereof, or to restore same as nearly as practical to its condition prior to such deterioration, decay, and damage. And number two goes on, that says, if you go to Section 8.16, that it'll read about substantial alterations. If you'd like me to read over those, I can. And finally, D, it says, in any case in which there might be some question as to whether the project may be exempted from review, may constitute a minor action, or may constitute substantial alterations, the zoning administrator shall be contacted for any interpretation prior to commencement of work. And then we have Section C, which is Section 8.17, certain minor actions exempted from the board by the historic district review board. So these actions in which, in the opinion of zoning administrator, will have no more effect on the character of the district. That means we can do administrative approvals. The zoning administrator can do administrative approvals as long as we receive an application. And it's minor. Zoning, this is the response from our office. The zoning administrator is responsible for administering the entire zoning ordinance, including the historic district overlay. Zoning clearance is required for any new uses, structures, work, sorry, compliance with all provisions of the zoning ordinance. Said zoning clearance is required to accompany any building permit issuance, as well as the historic district review and approval. The house at 204 Bay Avenue is a contributing structure in the historic district. The appellate re-roofed a component of the roofing structure for 204 Bay Avenue and used some different material for that. In addition, the applicant added new elements to the house of gutters and downspouts. These required application to the department and a review by the zoning administrator to determine the type of work and what level of review was required pursuant to Chapter Eight of the historic district overlay and their accompanying guidelines prior to any work commenced. Based upon the pictures provided by the applicant, when he was first contacted by the office, I agreed that replacement of the roof was necessary to prevent further damage due to structure and would fall under Section 8.7 as minor work. Once the appellant provided information about the square footage of the roof replacement involved, then the building official ruled that no building permit is required. The addition of gutters and downspouts was a new element that was being added to the house and required a permit under Chapter Eight, the historic district overlay, which could be administratively but still required a certificate of appropriateness and zoning clearance before any work commenced. The applicant informed the town after the work was completed and no approvals had been obtained from the town as notice in the violation. While the applicant completed and submitted the certificate of appropriateness application to the town when he was informed of the notice of violation, he did not provide the accompanying application fee of $500, as well as the working without a permit fee, or what is also called the after-fact fee of $1,000. An application is not deemed complete without payment of the fee and any violation fees that may be pending on a property. Therefore, the notice of violation that was issued on May 31st, 2024 remains in effect, and no permits have been issued for the work that occurred on this property. And then, you're welcome.
Yeah, I want to make one comment as we move forward. If you're in here and you're a citizen and you wish to speak regarding one of the applications before the board today, you must register before you can come forward to speak. If you have not registered, there's a form at the back of the room, kindly do so before we go forward. For the residents or citizens who wish to speak, when you come forward, we ask that you just give your name and address before you begin to speak. And you will each have allowed three minutes to speak on that particular, oh, on that particular application. Sorry about that. Mr. Chandler?
Are we going to re-propose motion for consideration?
Pardon, I'm sorry.
No, they're ready to hear your case.
Madam Chair, Board, thank you for hearing my appeal today. I had three questions, three questions around order of business today. First of all, I intend to record the audio of the meeting, is that okay?
I have no objection to it.
Okay. Secondly, I have a number of enlarged photographs to share with the board to illustrate my appeal. And again, I want to make sure that that's okay to share those. They can go into the record, I can put those in the record or submit digital copies.
That's correct. I mean, that's fine.
Okay, great.
Either way, whichever way works best for you.
Great. And also, I'll have a number of questions for Ms. Nunes during this. Should I address them to you or directly to Ms. Nunes?
I want you to address them to me first.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. My wife, Kim, and I are the owners of 204 Bay Avenue. We call it the Dryden House. No expense was spared by Dr. Dryden when he built the house in 1912. This is a picture from 1912.
We need you to speak into the microphone, sir.
This is a picture from 1912 of the house when it was built. You can see there's hardly any other houses around there in the C Cottage tradition. It was one of the first houses built. I would say that the house is one of the jewels of the town. Passersby often comment to me that we have the best house in town, and that, of course, fills me with great pride. But it wasn't always that way. When we came to Cape Charles in 2010, we saw the house, and it was a disaster. And I'm sure my neighbors here will attest to that. The whole house was literally overgrown. Ivy was growing inside the house. Squirrels had made their nests within the house. And the owner, Henrietta Morris, was living in the kitchen. The rest of the house was filled with, well, I would say her junk, but that's not being My wife and I have a great love for historic, historic buildings. We've actually just renovated a house in Richmond on Seminary Avenue. When we came here in 2010, we had, as I said, a deep passion for historic homes. Since then, we've spent upwards of $700,000 bringing this house back to life. We spent $500,000 restoring it. We spent another $200,000 in the years since, keeping it the way that it was when we restored it from top to bottom. One of the things that we did was install a $40,000 copper wraparound porch on the whole front of the house and side. That was a tin roof originally. We decided to upgrade it to copper, because that's the way Mr. Dryden would have wanted it. Which brings us to this year. For the last couple of years, we've been experiencing leaks in our rear bathroom and bedroom, causing extensive damage to the ceilings and walls. Despite various attempts to patch the worn-out roof on the rear addition, we decided to eventually buy the wall and fix it properly, knowing that a permanent fix would be costly. We reached out to Stevens Roofing, one of the premier roofing companies on the entire East Coast, the company that did such a wonderful job on our copper wraparound porch a few years earlier. The quote to repair the roof, $21,000. Given the expert knowledge of historic home restoration and roof repair shared between the owner of Stevens Roofing, Mr. Nick Price, and myself, we proceeded with the work safe in the knowledge that we were violating no town regulations. This set off a tsunami of paperwork, accusations, and frankly, flat-out lies from the zoning administrator, which is why we're here today. The relationship between myself and the zoning administrator is so bad that I refuse to speak to her without another person there to witness, because, as we'll see today, she twists facts, denies things that she's already said, all while dodging and wheeling to make So with that said, let's start listening again to what you just heard from Tracy. The appellant re-roofed a component of the roofing structure for 204 Bay Avenue and used some different material for that. Okay, that's a key phrase, I want you to remember that. In addition, the appellant added new elements to the house of gutters and downspouts. This is the house, when we bought it in 2010, you could see the gutters there and downspouts. This is a picture of the house last month, when the work was completed. I challenge you to spot the difference. The addition of gutters and downspouts was a new element that was being added to the house and required a permit under Chapter Eight, historic district overlay, which could be issued administratively but still required a certificate of appropriateness and zoning clearance before any work commenced. Okay, so that's what you heard from Ms. Agden just now. Three key takeaways. Ms. Nunes has acknowledged in what she just said that the roof repair falls under Section 8.1.7 as minor work. No permit was ever required for the roof repair, as for Jeb Brady. It was a 48-square-foot change to the roof, repair to the roof. It was nowhere near what's needed by the town for a permit. The addition of gutters and downspouts apparently was the sole reason for the violation, according to what is contained in here. Ms. Nunes has had a fair summary of what we stated here today.
I thought you were going to direct the questions to me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Chair, I ask.
Could you please restate the question you had from Ms. Nunes?
Yes. Those three key takeaways, and I'll read them again. Ms. Nunes acknowledges that the roof repair falls under Section 8.1.7 as minor work. No permit was required by the building coordinator, Jeb Brady, for the roof repair. And the addition of gutters and downspouts was, therefore, the sole reason that I was in violation.
Katie, do you want to respond to that now, or after?
No, Miss Nunes needs to finish his case.
I don't think you want to take away from your 15-minute allotment for Katie to answer, so why don't we move forward?
Okay, so let's take a look at the actual violation notice, the one that I was mailed eventually by Ms. Nunes. After a review of the application's pictures and email clarifications, it's determined that the application for certificate of appropriateness work roof only would have needed to have been reviewed by the historic district review, as it was clearly not the same material replacement for the roofs nor chimney. So again, two things that I would like Ms. Nunes to answer here. Why did she make no mention of the roofing material today? Is the roofing material now not in violation, as it's classified as minor work? And there's no mention of the addition of gutters and downspouts in the original violation that I was mailed, and yet here she is today citing that as a reason why I'm out of compliance. That's a violation of due process. So, as far as I can tell, and honestly, with all the noise and smoke screens that Ms. Nunes has put up, it's really hard to be sure what I'm here for today. Let me conclude by stating the facts before I hand it back to the board. I'm sure you have a number of questions for Ms. Nunes, who clearly needs to provide some clarity as to why we're here today, given the fluid nature of her arguments. Here are the three key points. Ms. Nunes stated that Jeb confirmed that no permit was required. Ms. Nunes stated that the work would fall under Section 8.1.7 as minor work. No gutters or downspouts. No gutters or downspouts were ever added. So what does that mean? Well, actually, there's one more thing, and actually, this is crucial. This all revolves around the fact that I did not apply for a Certificate of Appropriateness before I did the work. The Certificate of Appropriateness, if you look at it, and I think I've got it full on. Sorry, are we going to ask the?
Somebody just stepped out.
Can we just take a break for a second? Are we waiting for the response?
Yes, there's nothing. Sorry about that.
All right, let me start my conclusion again, if I may.
Certainly.
Really, this all goes back to the fact that I did not send in an application for zoning clearance before I started the work. Let's read what it says here on the application notes. "Use of this form to request zoning clearance for all new construction, alteration of existing structures, additions, or demolitions within the town of Cape Charles." Certainly, there was no new construction. There was no addition. There was no demolition. There was no alteration. What's there now is exactly what was there before. It's just been replaced with newer material. It's a repair. It's a like-for-like repair. Therefore, the application for zoning clearance was not needed. To back that up, Jeb Brady said that no permit was required. So, no zoning clearance needed, no permit needed. Therefore, in my view, I could go ahead and repair my roof without involving the town at all. I know the one thing that Ms. Nunez is going to bring up, well, there's two things. The first thing is she's going to say, "Well, the material that you used was different from the material that was on the roof before." Yes, that's true. It was. It was deteriorated copper on the roof before. After talking to Mr. Price of Stevens Roofing, we decided that enamel-coated aluminum that looks exactly like aged copper, that's the whole point of it, was a better material to use in this case. It was easier to work with, and it will provide exactly the same protection to the roof as the copper that was there before. Also important is in the Historic Review Board rules. If you look at exemption H, and this is what I find so amusing. "Additions or deletions to an existing building which are not visible from the public street or sidewalk are exempt from Historic Review Board review." This is what you see from the street. Nothing. You can't see it. You can't see any of the work that was done. Period. The only person that can see this from her house, and she needs to get up in her attic, is Edda Kay Pruitt. And you know what really annoys me about this and why this is a complete kick in the teeth? It's because every day I have to look at this monstrosity next to me, the Blue Roof on 208 Bay Avenue, which the, I know Ms. Nunez wasn't involved in that decision, but whoever was on the board then didn't have the balls to tell that guy to take it off and do it again. And now we all have to look at it and just cringe every time we see it. Thank you for hearing my appeal today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie, do you want to respond this time?
Good morning, Board. As Mr. Chandler indicated, we did have conversations during the spring of 2024 relative to his house and the work he was having take on in that house. When I, the office was informed that there may be work occurring on this property that was around the end of April, we contacted him and asked him, had work started? And I was told he was in the midst of gaining proposals, quotes. We accepted that. We then advised him he needed to apply, submit paperwork to the office for verification if the work would require any further permits where it could be approved under. I wasn't even aware of the full extent of the work he was trying to accomplish. I knew it had to do with some roofing work. And so with that said, we didn't hear back from him until I received communication from him May 13th, at which time he let me know that all the work was completed, which I found to be an odd communication from him, considering no paperwork had come in or if he felt he was exempt from any paperwork, why he needed to inform me that the work was completed. So I think he recognized there was some communication that had occurred, and whether he agreed, he should have been applicable to having any sort of oversight from the town on the matter. That is, I think, part of why we're here today over. So with that said, we then further communicated with him that he needed to complete certain paperwork to us, at which point he did. He provided and filled out a completed Certificate of Appropriateness for re-roofing because we do have different application forms depending upon the scope of work you were doing in our office on behalf of the Historic District Review Board. He completed that application. With that application, it provided us at least a scope of work of what he was seeking to do, and that's contained in Part 5 of that application form, which he submitted to us on May 13th of 2024. And in it, he indicated he would be removing the upper rear copper roof, built-in gutter system, and make repairs to the sheathing. He would furnish and apply a high-temperature ice and water barrier. I'm sorry, it's really small because I had to break my reading glasses. I apologize. And underlayment, and install in built-in gutters a 16- or 18-ounce built-in gutter system. New gutter to be installed using a cleated system to allow gutter to properly expand and contract. New gutter to tie into built-in gutter on the back of the house. Old and new gutter to tie together using cloth taping and coating. And then further, and install a double-lock standing seam metal roof system using Point 032 baked-on enamel aluminum. Tie the new roof into the slate roof and properly flash the chimney using materials and methods supplied by the manufacturer. And then also indicating he would take up the necessary slate to remove metal valleys over the front gable and make repairs to sheathing. If necessary, furnish, apply an ice and water barrier, underlayment, and install new metal valleys using the 16-ounce copper and reinstall slate. Replace the missing and badly broken slate in roof. Re-severe loosened sliding slate and reseal flashings where needed using a urethane hulking. I believe that's the word there. So based upon that information, we did provide a follow-up email to him seeking additional clarification as to the scope of the roof work because it was unclear by this, was he replacing all the roof? What portion of the roof was being done? We were unclear on that. But from that, we took away, yes, he was adding gutters throughout the roofing project, which was not identified before. That was new information for us as part of this process. Once he then responded to our follow-up email with some additional clarification on the amount of roofing work that was being done, it was only going to be contained to the back porch area, that was provided to the building official, who was then able to make a determination if that required a building permit or not for the roof work. And because the amount of square footage was beneath the threshold under the building code, he said no building permit was required. That did not negate the necessity of a zoning permit to be applied for and received and a Certificate of Appropriateness, which can be administratively issued on behalf of the Historic District Review Board in compliance with the overlay district and their guidelines. So that's what we were attempting to do with Mr. Chandler, is to get him in compliance with those components of our regulations. So we contacted him further. We still maintain that these were the violations that were still going on. We started to let him know that he had now supplied certain components of our original violation letter that had been resolved, including the application, confirmation of the sizes of things. That information helped us make determinations on the scope of work, that it could be a minor work that required only administrative approval at that point in time. We did indicate he needed to provide us the application fee of $500 as well. There is an imposition of working without a permit fee that has been imposed by, through Town Council when they adopted all of the fee structures. We informed him of those two responsibilities, and he has chosen not to pay those amounts. And so at this point in time, we have received no payment from him on anything. So I think essentially that really is the essence of his appeal at this point because he has provided us everything else necessary in our notice of violation to comply. Any further questions for me?
The Board have any questions?
I do have a question. On the application fee, the $500 application fee, that's for the continual use permit or the Certificate of Appropriateness. And then the violation you're stating would have been just for him not getting a permit.
A Certificate of Appropriateness, yes. That is a permit.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is a Certificate of Appropriateness required if the code official has determined no permit is required?
Yes, because the code official does not issue certificates of appropriateness. That is a component of Article 8, which is the Historic District Overlay. And that is a form of zoning approval that is issued by the Historic District Review Board, either directly by them or that's been assigned to me as their agent to issue on their behalf as an administrative permit for the zoning administrator. So there are building permits that you get permits for. There's Certificates of Appropriateness that you have to get permits for. And then with those, they are all accompanied by a zoning clearance form as well.
Do you know why the Historic Review Board got involved in this?
It's not that they got involved. The whole district is all of R1, all of the downtown area of Cape Charles. And so any work that occurs on the exterior of a structure in the town of Cape Charles has to meet compliance with the Historic District Overlay, Article 8 of the zoning ordinance, and its accompanying guidelines that have been promulgated by the Town Council and the Historic District Review Board.
And there's no exceptions to that?
No. Everything has to comply with the Historic District Overlay and its accompanying guidelines. All the work has to comply with that. Some of them may require a minor work of a Certificate of Appropriateness that I can issue at my level as a zoning administrator. Some require the full board to be involved, and it goes to a full meeting of the Historic District Review Board for them to take up that review and reach a determination on. That's not something I can do. So when we talk about substantial alterations, that is the purview and work component of the Historic District Review Board. They have assigned certain matters that I can take up and review, and that is the minor work. That is what we have detailed for you today over what things that I can take up and review so they can be approved in less than a day in my office.
Is, are repairs considered substantial alterations?
Depending upon the type and level of repairs. So if it is causing structural damage, which again, part of his completing the application, providing us photographic evidence, we were able to see some of the damage occurring inside his house due to the roof issues going on. And so we were then able to make those determinations that we needed to move forward with approving this as a minor work because of those roof issues going on so that no further damage was happening to the interior of the structure.
I did not know that Historic Review Board contemplated things going on inside people's houses.
We don't contemplate things going on, but there could be things happening on the exterior of a building that affect the inside of your house. I think that's pretty well-known. So if you have a hole in your roof, that could be causing water coming into your structure, into your roof, into your attic, into your kitchen, things of that nature. Or you could just be choosing to replace your roof due to the age and condition of it, but there is actually no physical damage occurring either to the house itself or within the house that would cause immediate action to have to be taken. There would be sufficient time for proper review of the materials being proposed that the Historic Board could review it, take it up, and give approval of.
So that's what was going to happen because you weren't going to authorize it administratively?
I said I was. I issued that. As soon as he filled the application out, we let him know that I would be able to issue this and approve it administratively. Now that I had seen the documentation and for the extent of the scope of work he wanted to do, yes, he provided the materials choice that was slightly different than what was currently on the structure, but he had also demonstrated to us the damage that was occurring due to the leaks that were happening in the roof structure inside the house that were jeopardizing some of the integrity of the inside of the house, the historic nature of the house. And so I felt that rose to the level of being able to approve it administratively. Yes. And we let him know that. We were just waiting on payment for the fee application to come in, as well as to address the payment for working without a permit. But we did issue, we let him know that this would be approved. We did not stop him from making those improvements because they all happened after the fact. We were only informed of them afterwards. So I never stopped him from doing the work.
No.
I had two things. Mr. Chandler, I didn't see from your 1912 image of the property that you purchased at 204 Bay. You can see a front view of it, but what I don't see is that gutter system, did it wrap around the entire structure when the house was built?
Come to the podium.
You know, that's a great question, and that's actually the reason why I printed that picture off. So I think it's probably time for a little architectural education, maybe, here for some of you, and certainly from Ms. Nunez. The gutters on the house are integrated gutters. It's a gutter system that's built out of wood. And what you see on the picture there is the wooden cornice. So it's actually the cornice that is the gutter, okay? It's made of wood. It's shaped, and it has decorative features all the way around it. And if you walk around the house, please feel free to go down and take a look, you'll see it's all the way around, all original cornice. And I've got a picture to demonstrate that. This is the guttering, sorry. This is the guttering that Ms. Nunez is saying I quote "added," okay? Take a look along here. You'll see this is the original inlay inside the guttering, okay?
What is the location of that on your property?
Okay, so this is looking out towards Tazwell.
Okay.
All right. So this section here is heading towards Tazwell. This is heading back towards 208 Bay Avenue, and this is going off towards Edda Kay's house.
To the east, okay?
Okay. So what you can see is what Stevens Roofing has done, they have replaced the lining of the cornice with new copper lining. So they've replaced like-for-like, okay? I wanted to illustrate this a bit further, because I knew this would come up today. This is the cornice, and this is the damage that the rain had done over the years to the wooden cornice. So obviously, the lining had to be removed for the cornice wood to be repaired, and then new copper lining put back in on top of it, okay? This is the same picture showing that wooden cornice with the new copper lining installed, okay? Like-for-like repair.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And let's be very clear about this. This is what you see of that repair, a one-inch overlap of the new copper. And you can see, if you look carefully on there, where it joins to the old copper.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse myself, I'll be right back.
We would open the meeting at this point for the applicant to public comments, but no...
I'd like to correct something that Ms. Nunes said in her statement.
Come up to the podium.
Can I wait for him to come back?
Okay. Well, in the meantime, I'll speak about the... We would normally open up the meeting for the comments from the public, but right now, nobody from the public has registered to speak today. So that portion of the meeting is now closed. I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, can I register now?
Okay, come forward. While we're waiting for Mr. Holloway to come back. I need your name and address, please.
Kathleen Glazer. I live at 520 Randolph Avenue, and I am the chairman of the Historic Review Board. And should I wait for Jim to make my comment?
Yes. And your address again, please?
Pardon?
Your address again, please?
520 Randolph. First, I want to thank Katie for what a wonderful job she does. I work very closely with her, and I depend on her knowledge and breadth of all of the zoning requirements, so...
We'll have to hold your comments until Jim gets back.
Sorry. I do... So as the chairman of the Historic Review Board, we deal directly with these issues. And I think that the biggest issue in town is the lack of knowledge of the distinction between the different requirements. Everyone thinks that all they need is a building permit. The building permit is one totally separate thing. And many things don't require a building permit, but they still require zoning authorization and historic board approval. We're not arguing the design or the fact that the house needed the work. The only point I think that's trying to be made here is the procedure was proper procedure followed. And it's very clear that any work to be done in town has to have zoning and historic approval. If it's minor, zoning can do it administratively. If it's a change in materials in any way, it usually has to go to the board. But those things can all be done rapidly in a timeframe that would prevent damage to the house. It's the procedure that needs to be followed. That's all I'll say.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chandler, you spoke?
Yeah.
I'd just like to make some corrections to the statements that Ms. Nunes made when she was here. Ms. Nunes stated that I contacted her before the work started to have initial discussions with her. That's not the case. I never spoke to her. I have never spoken to her in my life before she called me and said, "I see you've had some work done on your roof."
Mr. Chandler, could you please keep your comments briefly into the issue that's in front of us today, which is your application? Your issues with Ms. Nunes are separate from that.
Okay, no, this is completely relevant to that. So what she's trying to say is that she'd already had discussions with me, and I'd given her a hint of what I was going to do. That's not the case at all, because at that stage, I knew that I didn't need a certificate of appropriateness. Let's look at that form again.
Actually, your position is that you didn't need the certificate of appropriateness, even though that's what the ordinance requires?
No, it's not what the ordinance requires. The use of this form is for all new construction, alteration, and existing structures. Let's be really clear about that. Otherwise, if I went out and started touching up some paint on the side of my house, I'd have to get zoning clearance for that, apparently, because I'm doing repairs that haven't been authorized. But I'm not altering, I'm not adding, I'm not deleting. What's the difference between touching up some paint on my house and making a repair to my roof? Every single thing that we do in town to repair our houses would have to go through Katie Nunes, and that is clearly not the case here. That would be just dumb.
Thank you for your opinion.
Thank you.
Anybody on the board have any questions? We're closing that portion of the meeting. Are there any comments any board members want to make regarding this application before we move forward?
I don't know. My comment is, is I'm still not seeing this as a substantial alteration, according to the approval needed by the historic board review. I'm just not seeing where it's not... It's not done on, like, it was to repair with light or light materials. So I'm just not seeing how it's meeting the requirement to have a conditional, to be before the board. I'm just not seeing it.
You're talking about the historical board review?
Yes.
But a minor alteration doesn't require the board review, it can be done administratively.
Right.
But this actually isn't an alteration.
Right.
This is a repair.
Repair, right.
And... Based on what Mr. Chandler told us and what we saw in the images, this integrated gutter system was on this home when it was built in 1912. So I don't... There was no modification there. That is repair of a gutter system. And based on, I don't know whether it was in conjunction with the gutter, that there was a roofing failure that needed to be repaired?
Yes.
But the fact that the applicant actually tried to get something that would be, give it a long life, and actually looked like aged copper, takes a lot of credit in terms of getting something that actually then will match what the rest of the house looks like in terms of aged, actual aged copper. So it seems to me that that was the right thing to do. And I really keyed on the fact that because this can't even be seen from either the street or side street or anything else, the only person that can see it is the applicant and the neighbor on the third floor of their home as well, with a pair of binoculars, I guess, so, yeah.
And I also see from that original picture, 1912, there was no addition of a new downspout, because it had a downspout to begin with as well.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Pete, you have any comments?
I took a ride over there this morning, and I just noted that all of the downspouts were fitted, you know, to go out and run off the property. And the main job of gutters and downspouts is to protect the foundation, and so I thought that was good.
For me, I think this is really all about procedure, that Mr. Chandler didn't follow the procedure in terms of making the application, is the work wasn't denied or prohibited. And if we're going to have these ordinances, we need to enforce them. Otherwise, what's the point?
Right, what's the point?
So, anybody want to make a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion that we, that the board approves the appeal.
Is there a second?
I second that.
May I ask for a rationale?
We didn't need a permit to begin with.
Does that need to be a rationale?
She's asked for it, so Pete, what's your... Why are you making the motion to approve the appeal?
Because by reading of the statute and the definitions, et cetera, it was not substantial, not different material. There was nothing that required... Nothing that required approval from, not a permit, nor approval from the Historic Review Board. It's just procedure for procedure's sake, in this case. And the amount of money that was spent, the amount of effort that went into creating something that is, not creating, but re-establishing something that was already there, but in fact improving on it, is something that ought to be recognized. And I think it's unfortunate that it ended up being at loggerheads, but I don't see where you should be fined for not doing something you didn't have to do.
Is there a second to the motion?
I do second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay. I felt that if we have the procedures as ordinance, it should be followed. Thank you for everybody's time.
Thank you.
We'll take a small break, since everybody's been sitting for an hour.
There's one here in the back.
This one?
You know where it is, right?
This one back here.
Go straight, go left, and you'll see another little one. It's got a white handle.
Not generally. I mean, I thought you did make a closing statement.
No, that wasn't...
Oh. Some of our procedures are set in still, I don't actually recall that.
Sure do.
Thank you. Okay. All right.
Yep, I got it.
It's a little one, but it works.
All right. So Mr. Chandler wants to make a closing statement.
Did he do that?
No, I don't think so. He's the guy who asked when he did. I don't remember us ever doing a closing statement. Pete, Valma went to get his glasses.
Did you find your glasses? What I was looking for? No. Give it a hell.
Mr. Chandler had asked to make a closing statement. I've spoken to other members of the board. We typically do not do that, and in the interest of time, we'd like to move forward with Mr. Wendell's application. I'm sorry, Mr. Chandler, I thought you had made a closing statement before you stepped away.
Using expression while you're ahead.
Tracy, did anybody register for Mr. Chandler's? Nobody registered yet? Frank, right, yeah. This is for Chandler. Are you the Mr. Reddell? I put add a captain to me.
Okay.
Probably my glasses, but mine are mirrors. Mine are bested. All right. I need to spread them around in my house now.
So, the meeting will now reconvene. Thank you, Mr. Wendell. The next item on the agenda is an application from Frank Wendell Jr. appealing the decision from the zoning administrator dated July 8th, 2024, which cited that a lot on the 500 block of Madison Avenue was in violation of Cape Charles ordinances for the parking of a vehicle on a lot without a residence, an undeveloped lot on Sections 3.2 and 2.9. Mr. Wendell, come forward.
No, staff.
Oops, sorry.
We have a new staff person.
Thank you for prompting me.
All right, so my name's Jack Steinmeier. I'm the new staff person, the zoning compliance officer. And I'm here to give you the staff report on why we believe the applicant is in violation of Sections 3.2 and 2.9 of the Cape Charles zoning ordinance. Mr. Wendell is using his right to appeal for the July 8th, 2024 zoning administrator letter of violation, which cited him for the unauthorized parking of a school bus on an undeveloped lot on the 500 block of Madison Avenue. Mr. Wendell does not believe he is in violation of Sections 3.2 or 2.9 of the Cape Charles zoning ordinance because he does not believe the zoning administrator is correct in her enforcement of the zoning ordinance as it pertains to the definition of a parking lot. However, pursuant to Section 3.2 of the Cape Charles zoning ordinance, parking a vehicle on a lot without a single family dwelling or any of the permitted uses allowed in the residential one district, which per the Cape Charles zoning ordinance, Section 3.2, is not a permitted use or conditional use. The applicant's vehicle has been parked on this lot for an extended period of time, thus creating an assumed permanent parking lot in an area that is zoned only for residential purposes. If there was a dwelling on the lot, it would be an assumed accessory use. However, without a dwelling, there is no reasonable need or justification for a vehicle to be parked on this lot unless for storage purposes. Furthermore, under Section 2.9, the definition of a parking lot per the Cape Charles zoning ordinance, which is the only definition that is applicable in this instance, states "an area or building designated or designed for temporary storage of vehicles." While the applicant's lot does not have the characteristics of a commercial parking lot, it does fall under the criteria of a parking lot per the Cape Charles zoning ordinance, as the vehicle has been there for an extended period of time, as stated before. After the applicant was made aware of the violation, staff went out on 6/7/2024, took pictures of the bus, and noticed it had been there for quite a while. This was later confirmed as after the applicant moved the bus, it needed mechanical repairs to make it safe for further transportation, which is why we respectfully request the board deny the appeal for Mr. Wendell and uphold the July 8th, 2024 notice of violation based on the zoning administrator's decision was correct in the application and enforcement of all provisions of the zoning ordinance as outlined.
Thank you. Mr. Wendell?
To the members of the Cape Charles Board of Zoning Appeals, I am here today to formally appeal the decision made by the planning administrator regarding the alleged violation of parking my vehicle on an undeveloped residential lot located behind my home. The original violation letter claims that I have created an illegal parking lot in an R1 zone, which I contest for the following reasons outlined. First, I wish to clarify that my undeveloped residential lot is not a parking lot. The term parking lot typically refers to a commercial or public space designed for multiple vehicles, often involving infrastructure, paving, signage, designated parking spaces. My use of the lot is purely personal and does not involve any such developments or commercial activities. Furthermore, there is no zoning ordinance that explicitly prohibits residents of Cape Charles from parking their vehicles on their residential lots. The zoning administrator's decision to issue a violation relies on a subjective interpretation that lacks clear support from the cited ordinances. Additionally, the administrator claims that the parking of vehicles on a lot in a residential zone district is an assumed accessory use to a house, but not a standalone, but not a standalone use without a structure. However, this concept of assumed use is not mentioned in the ordinance, indicating that the administrator has exceeded her authority by making unwarranted assumptions. Moreover, the absence of explicit permission in the town ordinance 3.2 for single-family residential district R1 does not imply prohibition. Notably, the town permits short-term rentals in this district, even though they are not explicitly listed as permitted or conditional uses. This precedent suggests that any use falling within this ambiguous category of not being explicitly permitted, conditional, or prohibited should be considered permissible. Otherwise, it would, otherwise, it would reflect inconsistent enforcements of ordinance 3.2. Ironically, in a small town where residents are increasingly concerned about the lack of available street parking, the zoning administrator's efforts to restrict my use of my private property could exacerbate this issue. Instead of my vehicle occupying street space, it was parked where it should be, on my property. The R1 zoning designation is intended to preserve the residential character of the neighborhood, which my actions do not infringe upon. My use of the lot does not create any nuisance or negatively impact the surrounding properties. In light of these points, I respectfully request the Board of Zoning Appeals to overturn the decision made by the planning and zoning administrator. The alleged violation by the zoning administrator is an unwarranted governmental overreach that takes away our property rights here in town. If parking a vehicle on a R1 lot with a dwelling is an assumed accessory use, and parking a vehicle in a, on an undeveloped lot is an assumed accessory violation, then that's way too much assuming for our small-town government. Please vote in favor of restoring my property rights. Thank you.
We have three people who have registered to speak today regarding this application. When I call your name, please come forward and state your name and your address and try to speak into the mic for recording purposes.
Are you going to swear?
We haven't been. First one is Martin Mayer.
So, my name is Martin Mayer. I'm a property owner at 428 Plum Street, right next to Mr. Wendell's undeveloped lot. I received notice from the town of Mr. Wendell's appeal of the decision that he was in violation of Section 3.2 of the Town of Cape Charles zoning ordinance, based on a definition in Section 2.9. I write in support of Mr. Wendell's appeal, and it is my professional opinion that his appeal should be granted for the reasons that I outline below. In the time I have known Mr. Wendell, I have found him to be a good neighbor, friendly, and willing to help out. He maintains his property, is pleasant to interact with. But my support for his appeal is not about personal feelings. Upon reviewing the violation notice, I have found several inconsistencies and irregularities with how the town has proceeded from the initial violation to the interpretation of regulatory language. The notice received in the mail indicated Mr. Wendell was in violation of Cape Charles zoning ordinances for the parking of a vehicle on a lot without a residence per Sections 2.9 and 3.2 of the zoning ordinance. The logic of the violation seems to be that because a vehicle was parked on private property for an alleged extended period of time, the property owner was thus operating a parking lot in an area of town not zoned for a parking lot. The foundation of the alleged violation rests on the definition of parking lot or parking garage found in the zoning ordinance, Section 2.9. The definition states that a parking lot or parking garage shall mean an area or building designated and designed for the temporary storage of vehicles. That language comes directly from the ordinance. The zoning ordinance indicates that a parking lot is not compliant with the residential zoning overlay. It should be abundantly clear to anyone that Mr. Wendell was not operating a parking lot from his residential property. The zoning administrator's position, per the appeal packet, is that the applicant had a parked vehicle on the undeveloped lot, which per the Cape Charles zoning ordinance, Section 3.2, is not an allowable use. This vehicle had been parked at this location for an extended period of time, thus creating a permanent parking lot. The parking of vehicles on a lot in an R1 zoning district is an assumed accessory use to a house, but it is not a standalone use without a structure. Again, I reiterate that this lot is not currently, nor was it ever, being used as a parking lot. I lived there for three years. It's right next door to my property. The ordinance definition alone is disqualifying of the violation based on the definitional requirement of vehicles, hence more than one, being required to legally define a parking lot as per the zoning ordinance. Further, where in the zoning ordinance does it state that a property owner is not allowed to park a vehicle on their undeveloped lot? Or does it state that parking a vehicle on your property for an extended period of time reclassifies that property as a parking lot? And where does the zoning ordinance state anything about parking being an assumed accessory to a house, but not an undeveloped property? What ordinance allows for this assumption? This is not a letter in support of Mr. Wendell as much as it is to point out the inconsistencies and irregularities that support this decision and to highlight the concerns I have with the process. For the above reasons, I stand here today in front of you in support of Mr. Wendell's appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Elise McMath?
My name is Elise McMath. I live at 304 Tazewell Avenue. To the members of the Board of Zoning Appeals, I'm here today to express my strong support of Frank Wendell Jr.'s appeal regarding the recent administrative ruling affecting his property at 515 Monroe Avenue and the adjacent lot on Madison Avenue, which extends from the backyard of his primary residence. To provide context, my 1909 home on Tazewell Avenue has housed five generations of my family. Frank is my father's first cousin, and he shares a similar heritage, with his family having contributed to our town's history since their arrival from Austria in 1884. Frank is a dedicated community member who maintains the landscaping of his property with great care, even assisting my family with our property's landscaping during a difficult time after my father's passing. His commitment to our shared public spaces further illustrates his devotion to the town's upkeep. Frank's family has owned their home and the adjacent lot for over 120 years. His father, the late Francis Wendell Sr., served on the Cape Charles School Board for over 40 years, and Frank served on town council for 16 years. Frank now occupies the very house his father was born in. The legacy of the Wendell family is deeply rooted in the history of Cape Charles, starting from their humble beginnings as sharecroppers who worked on a farm that is now part of Bay Creek, and evolving into successful business owners, one of which still operates today on Madison Avenue. Frank's great-grandfather and grandfather hauled the very bricks used to build the St. Charles Catholic Church and returned home each night to their families with blistered and bleeding hands. It's essential to acknowledge that the lot in question historically housed the horses, wagons, and other vehicles needed to haul the materials that were used to build many of the historic structures that we all know and love. And some level of respect ought to be shown to the Wendels for their significant contributions. Frank and my father, both born and raised in Cape Charles, fondly remember a time when the town thrived year-round, filled with bustling businesses and lively neighborhoods of families and children. Central Park, now known for its Saturday night concerts, was once the backdrop for their high school glory days as captains of the football team. It is absurd to suggest that a lifelong resident with deep community roots could undermine the town's charm. Such claims overlook the rich history we embody. As one of the few remaining families with longstanding ties to Cape Charles, we have weathered both economic prosperity and decline. While many long-term residents have been displaced by rising costs associated with the recent vacation rental boom, we continue to welcome new residents. However, our experiences stand in stark contrast to the narrative some promote that they have saved the town. Cases like this would suggest the opposite. I oppose this ruling because it infringes on my property rights. The administrators claim that parking on undeveloped lots constitutes illegal parking in the R1 zone is simply flawed. There are legitimate parking areas within the R1 zone. For example, the St. Charles Catholic Church's lot is an R1 lot, and it has legitimate parking infrastructure. I mention these examples to stress the need for consistent enforcement, not... I asked if I could read the letter.
Your time is still three minutes.
I wouldn't have read the letter if you wouldn't have said yes.
Okay, finish then.
The administrators claim that parking on undeveloped lot... I'm sorry, I lost my spot. I mention these examples to stress the need for consistent enforcement, not to promote similar violations. The combination of the R1 zoning ordinance, which does not address parking, with the standalone definition of a parking lot, raises serious questions about administrative authority and fairness. If the Board of Zoning Appeals supports the administrators merging of two seemingly unrelated ordinances to make unsupported assumptions, it undermines the foundational purpose of zoning regulations. This grants the administrator the power to create selectively enforced rules. It would be more beneficial for the town council to clarify zoning ordinance 3.2 and ensure equitable enforcement and eliminate ambiguity. The selective enforcement, based on a neighbor's complaint, indicates that the zoning department should focus on enforcing specific ordinances rather than subjective concerns about visual appeal. Unlike a homeowners' association, the zoning administrator's role is to uphold clear laws, particularly in a historic district without an HOA. Upholding property rights and ensuring consistent standards for all residents are essential. If the town were to enforce the combination of these two ordinances consistently, I believe it would find the issue to disproportionately impact longstanding residents like us. If I had concerns about my neighbor parking a vehicle on his lot, I would prefer to address them directly with my neighbor before resorting to an administrative process that could result in significant fees for my neighbor and strained relationships. Not to mention, such enforcement could contradict the town's priorities by forcing residents to park on the street, worsening the existing parking shortage. Ultimately, this ruling lacks support from the cited ordinances and restricts our property rights. Its implications could exacerbate the divide between long-term residents and newcomers, undermining the spirit of respect and cooperation that is essential for a thriving community. It's crucial that we stand up for community members like Frank, who represent the living history of Cape Charles, and encourage open communication among neighbors before escalating matters to the authorities. Thank you for considering my perspective as you review this appeal, and I hope you will choose to protect our property rights, encourage off-street parking, and support Frank Wendell Jr. in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. There were no other... There are no other people registered to speak on behalf of this applicant. We did, however, receive other letters or emails regarding this issue.
All right, so the first one is more of a partial one because it was a voicemail. It says, "Hello, Katie, this is Deborah Hales. I own a house at 516 Madison Avenue. I live in Richmond, Virginia. I just got a certified letter about the zoning hearing on October 8th. It is really a vacant lot that is right beside my house. I did write a letter about the three vehicles that are always park fare. I did not do it on my own accord. I had a neighbor call and say that the neighborhood was going all, going to be on board with kind of bringing up the neighborhood and not having a lot of stray animals and vehicles that did not belong there. So, I did write a letter, but I live in Richmond. I just had a new grandbaby. I am not going to be able to make the meeting. But to be honest, I was supporting my other neighbors. You know, it really, I think, the only thing that bothered me was that there are a lot of stray cats." That's where that one ends. And then the next one is from Joseph Dudak. Dear Ms. Nunez, I am writing to ask you that you do not allow Mr. Wendell... "Dear Ms. Nunez, I am writing to ask you that you do not allow Mr. Wendell to move his bus back to the lot at 514 Madison Avenue. The school bus that he parked there is a commercial vehicle. Whether he uses it for personal vehicle, personal reasons or not, is irrelevant. To allow him to return the bus back to this lot would set the standard for the rest of the lots in the residential district. It would be a shame to allow such an eyesore, especially while the town is continuing to develop as a beautiful destination for homeowners and visitors." And then the next one is from Julie Mayer. "To whom it may concern, I am an owner of a nearby property, 428 Plum Street, which is next to Mr. Wendell's undeveloped residential lot on Madison Avenue. I received notice from the town of Mr. Wendell's appeal of the decision that he was in violation of CZZO, Section 2.9 and 3.2, by parking a vehicle on his lot. As a neighbor and property owner in the historic district, I am writing to voice my support for Mr. Wendell's appeal. After reviewing the Board of Zoning Appeals packet as well as the referenced zoning ordinances, it is my professional opinion that Mr. Wendell's appeal should be granted. Section 2.9 sets forth the definition of a parking lot as an area or building designated for the temporary storage of vehicles. Clearly, to fall within this definition, the area must be designated for the storage of multiple vehicles. In this instance, Mr. Wendell has only parked one personal vehicle on his residential lot that is adjacent to his home. There are no signs, markers, or any indication that the lot is a designated area to park multiple vehicles. It is a grassy area located behind his residence, not a parking lot by any stretch. Section 3.2 sets forth the various uses for property in the R1 district. There is nothing in this ordinance that prevents a resident from parking a personal vehicle on his or her property. The only reference to parking deals with the operation of bed and breakfast slash tourist homes, which is not applicable here. There is no prohibition of parking a vehicle on an undeveloped lot in the residential district. I took the time to review the other town ordinances and Virginia code sections that were not included in the packet available online, and could not find a single ordinance or statute that prohibits a resident from parking a vehicle on an undeveloped lot in a residential area. Additionally, I could not find any legal authority for the town to regulate the use of private property in that manner. I believe the purpose of Section 3.2 in most of the zoning ordinances in a residential district is to preserve the residential character of the neighborhood. Mr. Wendell's parking of this vehicle on his undeveloped lot does not negatively impact the character of the neighborhood. Mr. Wendell's lot is adjacent to my property, and he has always been a conscientious neighbor. He maintained and continues to maintain his underdeveloped lot in a way that does not negatively affect the use and enjoyment of my property or any other nearby properties. It seems overreaching and unjustified for the town to issue a violation because Mr. Wendell has his vehicle parked in his lot. In fact, Mr. Wendell's parking of a single vehicle on his undeveloped lot has less of an impact than any other uses specifically permitted by Section 3.2, such as dog pens or accessory buildings. I completely disagree with the conclusion that Mr. Wendell is operating a parking lot within a residential district. I have never witnessed multiple vehicles parked on the lot, nor have I observed anything that would suggest that an undeveloped lot is in a place to store multiple vehicles. Instead, Mr. Wendell has parked one personal vehicle on the lot. For those reasons, I write to encourage the Board to grant Mr. Wendell's appeal and to find that he is not in violation of either ordinance by the town." Yeah, let's just copy the first one. And that's it.
Thank you. Comments from the Board?
I have a couple of comments, and I also have a couple of questions for Frank as well as for Katie. First of all, first of all, I just wanted to kind of comment on what Ms. McMath had said about... I just, I find it ironic that people living in our community that are pushing for small-town community feel and camaraderie don't approach their neighbor first before bringing it directly to the authorities. I feel like there's a lot to be said to talking with your neighbor and seeing what you can work out before having to contact them. Second, I was looking at the procedure for parking violations, and I just wanted to know if any of this happened. It says that first, the law enforcement must ticket within the seven-day notice to move your vehicle. Were you ever ticketed?
No.
To move the vehicle? Okay. And is the vehicle licensed?
Yes.
And street legal?
Yes.
Okay. And the other thing was, as far as ticketing, or the vehicle was never... was it left unattended for more than 10 days on private property without you attending?
I lived there full-time.
Okay. And you said you had the plates. Personally, I don't find that this vehicle would constitute a commercial vehicle. According to the statute, it said a commercial vehicle would need to transport 16-plus people, which includes the driver, and have a weight of over 26,001 pounds. Do you know?
21,000 pounds.
And as others have stated already, I don't see it as being an obstruction. I kind of feel like when you ask for something, be careful what you ask for, because sometimes if you ask for something, you might get something you might not like. Like, if you ask him to move it off of his property, he might be parking it on the street. If it's street legal, taking up a lot more parking that the short-term rental issues are creating problems with already. So it's kind of like you're shooting yourself in the foot, I feel like. And I also feel like approaching your neighbor and trying to work out, you know, maybe hedges or a fence or something that could protect it, or, you know, the visual aspect of it. I just don't feel like he was operating a parking lot. Again, according to the town code and Section 3.2, that a parking lot says vehicles. It doesn't say vehicle with an S. So to me, that literally taking that wording from that, it would mean he would have to be parking more than one vehicle on this lot for it to be constituted as trying to run a parking lot. So that's kind of where I am right now.
Pete, you have anything to add?
Well, certainly the definition, it says vehicles. It's legal. I mean, that's words are words, words matter. Nor is it designated or designed in any way to accommodate the vehicles. I think having a school bus on your property, an old school bus on your property, is kind of hometowny. And less than at least, I'm not sure how the commercial comes in, but I've seen the word bouncing around in a few places. So I went to the Code of Virginia, and definitions, 46.2-341-4, definitions, commercial motor vehicle. The following are excluded from the definition of commercial motor vehicle. Number one, and the only one I'm going to cite, is any vehicle, when used by an individual solely for his own personal purposes, such as personal recreational activities. So that's what this is. It's one vehicle for Mr. Wendell's purposes, whatever they may be. And so this is not a commercial vehicle. That's all.
Jim, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, when I reviewed this package, I don't see this as a parking lot at all. It's on a private property. We've got a parking issue here in town. We don't want to force that vehicle to get on the street because of all of our parking issues. And based on the fact that it's not being used, the vehicle is not being used what it was originally built to do, which is to haul up a bunch of folks, it's not for that purpose. So I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Wendell, because this... he's parking his vehicle on his private property. I do not agree with the fact that they... that that could be considered an accessory unit to a home.
Accessory use.
Accessory use to a home, because if that's the case, then anybody who has an additional vehicle on their property, that's not an accessory to that home. It's not a building.
That's true.
Accessory units to properties are typically brick and mortar, buildings, not vehicles that can be moved. So from that perspective, I can't agree with... I agree that it should be able to be parked on that private property. Yeah.
I agree that it was Mr. Wendell's personal... the vehicle was his personal vehicle. It wasn't used commercially, and it was on his property.
Right.
And it's only one vehicle, too. So I have a motion regarding this application.
Can I speak, please?
Sure.
I do have to raise a couple of points you guys have raised to cite the town code issue, so I need to clarify.
Okay.
Thank you again. So again, I enforce the zoning ordinance, not the town codes. So what you referenced was relative to parking violations under the town code. That is the purview of the police department. This had nothing to do with anything relative to the town code components. It's only a zoning ordinance violation. So I do want to make that clarity for you. I do question whether it was licensed and legal at the time, because we are aware that Mr. Wendell had to actually have this vehicle removed for repairs. I'm not sure it actually had a valid license and registration. But again, that's not my issue of enforcement. That is, if the street... if this vehicle had been parked on the street, that would have been a concern under the parking violations and the police department. So that is not what I have cited him for under your zoning ordinance whatsoever. I do want to make that clear, okay? Secondly, under our zoning ordinance, I don't see anywhere in the zoning ordinance where I am responsible for determining nor administering a neighborly approach to anything or a hometowny feel to determine use of anything. Unless that's a component you want to write into your zoning ordinance, I'm applying and administering the actual zoning ordinance. I do want to make that clear, that we continue to look back to the zoning ordinance and what it says.
Those comments were responsible to...
I understand that. I do want to... but it sounds like rationale as to why you may be looking to support Mr. Wendell's appeal. I just want to be clear, that's not elements of the zoning ordinance. That's all. I just wanted to make you aware of that. And your job is to review whether I administered the zoning ordinance correctly and its administration interpretation of said. So with that said, I also then want to chime in here. If this may be for his personal use, and it absolutely can be for his personal use, he has every right to park it on the street. Whether you think he should park it on the street is really, again, not an issue of zoning. That's his right to use the public streets like anybody else to use the public streets. And we've told him that. He has every right to park this on the street, and that would be fine. It's not an issue of I'm objecting to the type of vehicle he has, whether it be a school bus or some other vehicle. It's just, it can't be on a vacant lot, which is undeveloped in the R1 district. And I know you feel like, well, he's got a house nearby on the back side. He does have a residence. Then he should park this vehicle by that residence or on the property of that residence. This lot is not part of his residence. He happens to own it under separate ownership, but it is not the location of his home. And so then I'm going to stress to you, because this is not the first time we have enforced the ordinance in this manner. We have more than half a dozen cases where we have actually issued violations, not just to Mr. Wendell's property, but to others throughout the town, for this very reason, for parking vehicles on undeveloped residential lots where there is no residence. There is no structure that is allowed by right or through a conditional use permit for a building or structure to be there that would then require the ancillary or accessory use of parking on that lot. And I know you feel that parking is really not an accessory use. You think accessories only apply to structures or buildings. Uses as well is under your zoning ordinance, and that's where we are taking this from. So I did want to make you aware of that as well. So again, this really comes down to, he has an individual residential lot without a residence on it. He has indicated down the road in my conversation with him, he would like to develop it as such, to one day put a house on there. So I think his intent is always to keep it as a separate structure or parcel from his residential lot. So I did want to put that into your consideration here. Lastly, it's not necessarily written in our zoning ordinance, but as all of you who have been through the courses at the state level, and I know two of you are going recently to the BZA certified classes, the Dillon Rule is a key component and principle in Virginia that governs all Virginia localities. And we have talked about this before. So I do want to read a little bit from that class that some of you are going to be recently going to. And it says, "That a locality's governing body has only those powers expressly granted by the General Assembly, powers necessarily or fairly implied from the express powers, and powers that are essential to the declared objects and purposes of the locality." And these are specific court cases going back as early as 1896 that dictate the foundation of Virginia law. So I do want to make you aware, there is massive precedent in Supreme Court rulings out of the Virginia Supreme Court on this very issue of the Dillon Rule and what powers are expressly given, or in the absence of those powers, what does that mean for a locality? And here it does mean, it's a rule of strict construction. If there is reasonable doubt with anything that we're doing, the doubts must be resolved against the locality's governing body. So what that means is, if it's not expressly written in law, it is not allowed. That's what that means. Our ordinance does not expressly allow parking lots in residential districts. So I do want to make you aware of that requirement. That's always been there. It's a core foundation in Virginia. We all may disagree the Dillon Rule should go away, but that's what's here today. It has been for more than 100 years as the precedent of law. Thank you.
I would like to comment as well, and I just wanted to say that my emotions or my feelings on it being parked on the street or in the lot has nothing to do with it. I still find nowhere in here, he's being fined for being considered a parking lot, that he's using this as a parking lot. And I don't find that that is a parking lot if there's not more than one vehicle, according to the Code 3.2, the Cape Charles Code. Now, he's got it licensed, so he could park it on the street. My personal feelings are, I think that we should look at properties like this for short-term rental issues with the parking. They could be helpful. But that's my own personal opinion. But I'm just not finding where this is constituted as a parking lot.
I mean, when I go back to 2.9, parking lot shall mean an area or building designated or designed for temporary storage of vehicles. This isn't designated or designed, and it's not vehicles. Again, you got to go by the words. There's only one vehicle here. And there isn't... there are no... it's not paved, or there's no lines for parking, there's no sign saying, okay, you can park here from 9:00 to 6:00, or whatever. I just... if you got to make the leap to this being a parking lot, it's not there.
Someone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve Mr. Wendell's appeal.
Can you provide your foundation for the ruling?
Sure. The foundation is, I cannot see this as being a parking lot. According to the Cape Charles Town Code, 2.9, Section 3.2, that it is stating that personal undeveloped lot is not a parking lot, because it is saying there has to be vehicles. to be vehicles. Again, I'm, it's not saying "vehicle" with apostrophe S, like it could be one or more, it's saying "vehicles," and I'm taking it for the simple, like Pete said, word for
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Your appeal has been granted, Mr. Wendell.
Thank you all for your time.
And lastly, the application for Robert and Kathy Naylor.
So, so the applicants, Robert and Kathy Naylor, have requested a variance from section 3.12 of the planned unit development, or the PUD, for a side yard setback reduction on the northwest side of the property from 10 feet to 6.9 feet, or a difference of 3.1 feet. And this requested variance is within the PUD village, within the bay, which is within Bay Creek and falls under the Akimak plantation, planned unit development, which is an appendix of the Cape Charles zoning ordinance. So the zoning ordinance that need to be, zoning requirements that need to be considered. Does the evidence show that the strict application of the terms of the ordinance would unreasonably restrict the utilization of the property, or that the granting of the variance would alleviate a hardship due to a physical condition relating to the property, or improvements thereon at a time of the effective date of the ordinance? The lot is legally sized per the PUD, and this lot will be the location of a newly constructed single-family dwelling. The applicant is seeking to receive a variance to allow for a 6.9-foot setback instead of a 10-foot side yard setback, and the lot has not been restricted from being developed with a single-family dwelling. Was the property, was the property interest for which the variance is being requested acquired in good faith and any hardship was not created by the applicant for the variance? The property has been owned by the applicant since 2024, who purchased it knowing the setback requirements of the subdivision. Will the granting of the variance not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and nearby properties in the proximity of that geographical area? This sort of variance has not been done in this area of Bay Creek before, and while there won't be copious amounts of traffic in this residential area, consideration needs to be given to the neighbors and service vehicles that will be in the area. Furthermore, safety concerns need to be taken under advisement. By moving this house 3.1 feet closer to William Scott Lane, there is a very small possibility that someone could take that corner much too fast and either clip or crash into the house. The 10-foot setback is there to prevent such accidents from occurring, no matter how rare they might be. Is the condition or situation of the property concerned not of so general or reoccurring in nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of a general regulation to be adopted as an amendment of the ordinance? This may be a reoccurring situation on other lots that front William Scott Lane, and the town may need to inquire further of the developer when the subdivision plats are being proposed and alternate setbacks are being submitted on the plat to examine full requirements that would be, that would allow for a side setback variance of this type in the future. Does the granting result, granting of the variance result in a use that is not otherwise permitted on such property, or a change in the zoning classification of the property? No, granting the variance would not change the zoning classification. Is the relief or remedy sought by the variance application of available through a special exception process that is authorized in the ordinance or the process for modification of a zoning ordinance at the time of the filing of the variance application? No, the variance is necessary. So staff recommends that the board consider the items that have been raised in this report and consider the request at hand. Staff recommends that the application be approved based on the, based upon the points raised in the ordinance requirements to be considered in this section of the staff report.
Thank you.
I can stand by for questions. Kathy and Mr. Naylor in Richmond?
Why don't you come forward?
Joey Omwelle with 105 Old Drive Chesapeake, Virginia Builders, the home builder and the applicant for the property owners. A lot of the information that was outlaid are basic talking points that I was going to bring to your attention. One key fact that I did just hear, as far as it being on a corner right-of-way, emergency vehicles getting around the front building line, setback line is actually five feet. We set the house back to 10 feet to allow extra accommodation, to have a clear sightline around the corner. Passed out a lot of the information that was just shared is information that I was going to repeat, so I'll save, save everyone hearing it twice. But I can stand by for more questions.
And nobody from the public registered to speak on behalf of this, or speak for this applicant? Do you have any questions, Lawrence?
I just have one question on, on the plans here, there's an alley behind the house, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was seeing that correctly. Thank you.
Which also has a five-foot building setback line, even though we're not building to it. Similar in nature.
And do you know, I don't know, I'm not familiar with the speed limit in Bay Creek, but I'm assuming it's pretty slow? Like, people couldn't take that corner really fast?
Correct.
Or shouldn't take that corner?
I believe it's 24. I believe it's actually 24, if I'm not mistaken. Not 25.
Either that or 18.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not above 24. Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Pete, you have anything to add?
This one's a little tough for me. We used to go by the standards that are now being considered by the zoning officials, and it, if any one of them is, isn't met, you know, that should be enough to deny the request. And the thing that jumped out at me right off the bat was that the, the Naylor's had the plat, so it's like, this is the house that we want to buy. Because my, that we want to build. My original thought about this was, well, this could have gone one of two ways. Either they had the lot, and then they decided to build a house that was too big for the lot, or they had the plat and they decided to buy a lot that was too small for the house. And so that's sort of like creating your own problem. I, I was surprised after going down that list of six items that were concerned by the zoning officials, that the conclusion was, yeah, approve it, we recommend that you approve it. And, I mean, I don't, I don't know. You know, I, it's tough for me when I first read it, and it's still tough now.
Can I give you a couple?
Sure.
Points, too?
Could you please come forward?
So Bay Creek, obviously, it's a PUD, they dictated their own setbacks. I think they're seeing now that, you know, under the ARC approval, which is obviously a necessary step for a building permit and process, the Naylor's purchased a property and then hired us to design a home to fit on that property. They were permitted by the ARC to have a reduction in their side yard setback, and I believe it was fairly common practice over the course of time, but I understand that, and Ms. Lewis can kind of speak to this, I'm not too sure, and maybe someone else, Bruce can speak to it from the ARC, that they wanted to resort back to the actual plat itself in having that 10-foot side yard setback. I, I'm involved in a lot of development over the south side, and on, on this side of the water, we've done a lot of building. And right-of-ways are obviously a safety measure, we always see them as a safety measure. And something that we looked at when making this request was, how much space is there on that corner? The adjacent properties are open space where no structure will be built whatsoever. One home has a 15, or the houses across the street will be 15-foot front yard setbacks, which give us over 71 feet of sightline. 71 feet is, is a, an abundant amount for a 25, 24, 18 mile-an-hour roadway. So that's something I really would like to bring to your attention.
I have one, I'm sorry, I have one other question. The houses that are going to be built right behind it, before the turn of that corner where their house is, at 105, William Scott Lane, and 103 and 101, how far are their front yards going to be set back from?
Five feet.
Five feet. Okay, thank you.
Additionally, there is a sidewalk that is outside of the property between the property line and the roadway. So it's not that the house is just, we're asking for the house to be six foot right off the road, there still is going to be yard, sidewalk, yard, curb, and road.
Thank you for clarifying that, I thought as much. Appreciate that.
Jim, did you have anything to add?
I do not.
I guess, the best I could come up with was no harm, no foul. You know, it looks like it'll, it'll be okay.
Yeah, I drove around the property yesterday, and when, and looking at the map, and when you have, as this gentleman said, it has the six, six and a half, some, six-foot something setback, plus the sidewalk, plus yard, and it doesn't look like it's, it's going to be a, really a thoroughfare, it's not going, not connecting other properties or other roads. So I would say, I, I don't, as Pete said, no harm, no foul. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Again, if you'd like to.
Yeah.
Please.
Based on the information provided, that this proposed home that's going to be built on a corner, they're not asking for a 6.9 reduction in the, in the setback, they're asking for a three-foot variation of this, of this setback. The fact that there's actually a sidewalk there as well adds additional space between the corner of that home and the actual roadway, and that was my biggest concern. Once I had that information, then I realized there's plenty of room between where the corner of that home would be and the road surface. And that's, that's why the reason I would make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Without any further business, could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.